It is Thursday, October sixth, twenty twenty-two, six P M. And Shelley, shall you begin the whole call? All righty. For Ms. Matt, tonight's agenda, the first entry for this tonight is the loyalty oath for the newly appointed Commissioner, Mr. Lee Hernandez.
What would they? Oh, that's as close as you're gonna get, because they're tied down. It's directional, not so much closeness.
They may have you step up to the podium for the.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be both good on there.
The big minister to all of our employees are.
Okay.
Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
I see Hernandez.
I see Hernandez. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And laws of the state of Arizona. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the same. And defend them against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully. And impartially. Discharge the duties of planning and zoning commission. According to the best of my ability. So help me, God. You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, for being here. So concluding that, item B is consideration of nominations and appointment of vice chair person.
So I would like to make a nomination, and I would like to nominate Tracy Quick as our vice chair person.
I'm in with that.
Okay, okay. Is there any other nominations to be made? Or shall we call that to a mo- motion to vote on the nomination of Mrs. Tracy Quick as vice chair of the planning and zoning commission?
And then the second is.
Okay, okay. Motion is seconded. We shall move forward with the vote. All in favor of Mrs. Tracy Quick as.
You can vote against yourself. It won't help.
We shall bring this to a vote to appoint or to elect Mrs. Tracy Quick as vice chair of the planning and zoning commission. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Tracy Quick, you have now been selected as the vice chair of the City Globe Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, Justin.
Hey, everybody. I did votes.
Thank you. All righty. Concluding that, concluding item B, we move forward to item C, which is the consideration to approve September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Chairman, I vote that we approve. I'm voting that we approve on this.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Shelley, do we vote on that, or is it the second of the motion? Okay, so we move forward to a vote to approve the September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting minute. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
September seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes have been approved. Moving forward to item D, public hearing and consideration of case number U P dash two-two dash zero-three. A request for a conditional use permit to allow a fence to exceed the maximum height of three feet within the street-side building setback of the T R Transitional Residential Zoning District pursuant to zoning code fourteen dash six dash five at property address of three-three-two Euclid Drive, Assessor Parcel Number two-zero-eight, zero-three, three-three-two. And is, Shelley, is Dana going to go into detail about that item?
I was just waiting for an opening. I'll be recusing myself, because this is my own property.
Will Dana take it from here, then?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Commissioners, pleasure to have this item in front of you tonight. If you recall, we had it originally advertised and scheduled for your last meeting, and unfortunately, we did not have a quorum because of Justin's abstinence from this agenda item. So we re-advertised and brought it back before you this evening. Hopefully, you can all see the screen of my presentation. Just to give you, well, we'll dive right in. Again, you, I'm sure you, well, Cecil, welcome. I think this is new information, possibly for you, so I'm glad I keep this slide on occasion. But what a conditional use permit is, basically, it's a, it's a very unique use or situation, structure that's unique to a site for a specific purpose and requires some outreach to neighbors and potentially affected people to see if they have concern over what that use would be. So if approved, they're not, any use permit rides with the land generally, so as properties sell, it runs with the land. And doesn't expire unless it's revoked by the city for whatever reason, or the use just collapses for whatever reason. It, like I said, requires a public notice, so we put an advertisement in newspaper, as well as mail all property owners within three hundred feet, and also post a large zoning sign on the property to notify anybody in that area that could be potentially affected and might want to be, provide some input. And then ultimately, a public hearing, which is this evening's, this, one of the purposes of this agenda items, to hold a public hearing. So after I finish my presentation, respond to any comments or questions you guys have, then Chair will open up the meeting to hear from the public, if anybody is in attendance to speak on this item. So that's it. And then we close the public hearing, then go on with your discussion and Q and A and action, ultimately, if that's, if you're comfortable doing so tonight. So I'll skip the next one. I already kind of covered that, but this is a unique provision in our zoning code, because we have a few of them. And I, but I really see the purpose particularly in the hillside community. It's globe with unique roadway standards and conditions in certain areas that might necessitate some sort of taller, either retaining wall or screen wall, or something like that. And we did, put this planning commission, a few commissioners on this current commission, did review one of these. That was probably about a year ago, a year and a half ago, and it was for a, an overhyped wall, retaining wall on a remodel of a house on a severe slope. And it was in the front yard setback. So anyway, aside from that, this would be the second one we've seen. I'll hop right in. Here's the property right at the corner of what is labeled as Robles Street and Euclid Avenue in the end of northwest of town, and Euclid is a very, somewhat of a hillside type of property. Just to orient you, here's the home, and as you can see, it clearly isn't, it's within the setback. I think there's a twenty-foot setback, or it might be down to ten feet for livable portions. But as properties in the community have, and this is a very old historic type property, I think it was built in nineteen fifteen, nineteen twenty, in that time period. Well, surveying was a little different back then, obviously, and right-of-way requirements and everything else. So as a, you know, this has developed, we've got this Robles Street that dead ends right here and provides just basically access to this addition, this lot right here. And I believe the food bank is back here, or can take access through there as well. But this is the property, single-family residence, parking in the rear. They've got two parking spaces in driveway. So Mr. Acevedo's request is to construct a fence. It's near that property line. We'll see the site plan in a minute. There's an existing retaining wall that would be mounted above and behind. I'll move on. So single-family residences, for the most part, surrounding. Euclid's a really interesting street. If you look and see how some of this parceling has occurred over time. So that, again, lends to this unique circumstance of no front yards and certain conditions, or building structures on property like that. All right, there is the site plan. It's oriented very similar. North is kind of to the upper right-hand corner, the residence. The existing block wall is shown here, and this is a portion of the block wall that would not have a proposed fence. The proposed fence is here in gray, kind of sits right behind with a gate from the stairs that you'll see in a minute. I've got an image of the, looking down the property, and then continue forward and connect and secure the property with the purpose. And here's that twenty-foot setback line. This portion of the property is a, is probably a three-to-one or two-to-one slope. I'd say probably two-to-one, pretty steep, unusable, if you will, part of the property sloping down. So they, looks like they also have a large retaining wall holding a portion of that out, so they could have a rear yard, if you will, for the property. He's proposing future RV gate fence or enclosure to allow for parking to continue in that rear area. But that's the proposed location of that fence. And stop me if you have any specific questions on the site plan or any of these details. Again, twenty foot side yard setback there. So there's, based on the orienta- the configuration of the lot, it's definitely constrained in terms of its usability within the building envelope, the building setback envelope. That's the proposed wall, our fence, to be located there. As you see on the, in the graphic on the right, retaining wall below. Pickets above, it's a cedar fence with some openness, which we like to have some of that visibility, both from inside the property and out, and that openness and allowing the air movement as well. And that's a view looking east down Euclid. That's the rear of the house, and this is basically Mr. Acevedo's parking area. And then this would be that retaining wall that you see on those plans, and that's the rear yard area that would be enclosed. And then again, there's that slope that I discussed, so that small rear yard area. So in staff's advertisement, I had one, maybe two inquiries. People were just wondering, curious what it was, or trying to locate their lot relative to this property, but no input was provided. And again, this evening, after discussion, you may open a public hearing to hear additional comment from the public. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the special fence. I think it will provide some utility and safety to that rear yard. We have a couple of conditions noted to maintain, make good repair, so that way, if it's ever dilapidated fence, or we have a problem, and not that Mr. Acevedo would do that, we always think of the future, then we have the ability to ask the property owner to either maintain it or have it removed. Unlike what we can do today with people's pallet fences and things like that that have occurred over time, this does give us a level of additional control over maintenance, property maintenance. So again, staff recommends approval on behalf of responding to any questions.
And Dana, this is just for informational purposes, but what was the, the height of the fence going to be? The maximum is three feet, and how much would that exceed?
Applications for five feet above that retaining wall.
Or just a couple of feet over the otherwise maximum.
So in total, and that, that retaining wall is designed to hold a grade, so it starts high near the side of the house and then, and then daylights effectively, oops, daylights right in the driveway. So it would be located right behind it. So yeah, for the most part, that's about three, might get up to four feet back towards that intersection. And then, so it would be a five-foot fence on top of that.
So off of the picture, where's it gonna be? Is it gonna be where the pink area is?
It cuts off, it doesn't follow this portion where there's a column here. It cuts off here, but yes, right behind the pink retaining wall, and then steps back with a gate to allow access. There's some stairs there. And then continue along that, the side yard.
Is it gonna be like additional to that, or?
Yes, additional. The existing retaining wall would remain.
All right, well, any other members of the commission having a comment?
Well, I will just say that I've actually, I drive by there quite often, and, and it could be nothing but a nice addition to the, in the street. Especially, I, I think we have kids who try to keep safe, keep them out of that street, and so I think it's a good thing.
Anyone else? All righty, I, I feel like this is an otherwise straightforward request, but I would still like the opportunity to open this to public comment. If there was anyone in, or first off, Dana, there was, or Shelley, there was, there was no emails or letters sent to anyone about that. I'd still like to open this up to the floor for public comment. If there was anyone who would like to step forward and make a comment about this question.
And Chairman, if you could, the formality is strike the gavel. We're now opening a public hearing.
We are now opening public hearing.
And then, yeah, if there's nobody to speak, we then.
Yeah, seems like.
Close.
Seems like no one has any additional comments to make, so we are now closing the public hearing. And with public hearing being closed, I would like to, I'd like to motion to vote on the public hearing consideration of case U P dash two-two.
I'm supposed to make your first motion. Just your motion, and just read it.
I see what you were saying about that, the second house, though, before I do this. The, the other house kind of has like that same thing going on. The bottom piece and then the wooden on top, it gives a good dynamic, right there, kind of. This has that, and then it'll kind of be like the same, but a little bit different. It gives it a good dynamic on that street. But I motion to approve case number U P dash twenty-two dash zero-three.
You gotta read the whole thing?
Oh, a request for a conditional use permit, C U P, to allow fence to exceed the maximum height of three feet within the street-side building setback in the T R Transitional Residential Zoning District pursuant to zoning code S fourteen dash six dash five, G, at the property address of three-three-two Euclid Drive, Assessor Parcel Number two-zero-eight slash zero-three dash three-three-two.
I second.
Motion has been seconded. I call to a vote to approve the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Case number U P dash two-two dash zero-three has been approved by the planning and zoning commission. So moving on to item E, we have consideration of case number S P dash two-two dash zero-one. A request for a major site plan approval of a miniature golf course, Hela County Mini Golf, in the C three Central Commercial Zoning District for the property located at two-zero-one West Cottonwood Street, Assessor's Parcel Number two-zero-eight, zero-three, zero-eight-two-C.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chairman Commissioners. This is a major site plan approval, as you just described. And I will turn on your display here, or presentation. And this, I gotta say, would be one of a few site, major site plans that have come forward in my work with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city. And it's very exciting to have recreational proposal and site plan proposed for the downtown, accessible directly from the downtown. Ms. Lois Manaras, I believe, is in the audience and is the property owner, as well as the manager of this LLC or group proposing this development. And I'll quickly just take you through, since we don't, we haven't seen many major site plans. So our zoning ordinance establishes that there can be a major site plan or a minor site plan, and what qualifies for those, that criteria. And basically, minor site plans are approved by the zoning administrator, myself, in consultation with the city technical advisory committee. All a ma- a group made up of different department heads, the various disciplines of the city. And if it's a commerc- it involves a commercial building, which this one does, or certain other conditions, then it becomes a major site plan and goes to you. And you are the final approval authority. If, for some reason or another, the applicant is not happy with your decision, they may appeal your decision to city council. And that is very similar to the conditional use permits and really, I think, all the approvals that conditional use permits and site plan approval, I believe, are the only two, don't quote me on that, processes that you are the final decision authority. But both of those things can be appealed to city council. We all, always want that vow to have an opportunity for council to hear something if somebody disagrees. So the Planning and Zoning Commission shall review all proposed major site plans and either approve, approve with conditions, or deny such requests. The purpose of this review is to relieve demonstrable adverse impacts of the development upon public safety, health, or welfare, to protect public investment in roads, drainage facilities, sewage facilities, and other public facilities, to conserve the value of buildings and to ensure that the regulations of the city are upheld. And that's from the code zoning ordinance. And unlike a conditional use permit, this does not require the public notification and all of those other measures that we do for zoning, rezonings, and conditional use permits. Oops, sorry about that. Didn't help. Very good. This is the site. It's off at the terminus of Cottonwood Street, the eastern, or western terminus, just across around tracks in Penalt Creek. Runs right through here. You can see it snaking under the highway, Broad Street, and then passing along to go underneath the sixty, again, here at the curve. Tebs is a, is a pretty old improvement in the city, and some work was done to prepare this property, including giving prior dedication, having council accept Teb Street right-of-way from the frontage of this property. That was deeded in like the twenties, of the nineteen twenties, and we had to go through a few different measures, including movement of this lot line right here. When we get the site plan, I'll, I'll explain that a little better. There was a variance issued for this property at the beginning of this year, or in December of last year, and I'll cover that in a moment. But again, it's at that terminus that's currently used as an RV park and has been. There has been also at least two, or that I'm aware of, zoning approvals for this property, specific to, by city council, obviously, to allowing a miniature golf course development to occur and moving the RV park across the highway, which happened. Just both RV parks continue to operate. So obviously, this RV park use would no longer be once permits are pulled and development begins, should that be approved. No longer exists as a, as a use, and it would become a recreational use, a private recreational use. With that, you see the large slope leading up to Highway sixty, the variance. So this is the overall site plan, and it's kind of laid over an aerial, and I'll also show you a clean one without the aerial behind it. Kind of tell what's what a little better. If you do have any questions or need to look at that. Just to give you a heads up, the Cottonwood Street Bridge has a, is part of our capital improvements. And I believe we're gonna rebuild that shortly here, including sidewalks to span the Penalt Creek as well, and provide better access to Teb Street, which ultimately goes under the highway to the east-west side of Broad. So it would be an entrance here. It would be gated, and so it could be secured. And then we have a trash enclosure, which we have a condition of approval. This is a, this was an updated site plan that I received. I think I included in your staff report, but it was a, a couple of minor modifications were made to address some city staff comments. We still have conditions of approval listed that cover these things to make sure that staff saw the ability to give a final approval on orientation of that dumpster, if you will. We want to mitigate, we want to mitigate it backing into our right-of-way and potential for conflicts and stuff like that. So we'll, we'll continue to work with them. This is not a bad solution, as shown here, but we'll, I think there might be a little bit further discussion on that particular location. But that's it. This structure to the top left, the site plan is a garage. uh, for Ms. Manaras' property, uh, next door here, and that was, uh, a structure that she had moved the lot line over in this location to add that structure and that land to the miniature golf property for the purposes of converting that garage into a clubhouse, office concession potential uh, scenario there where we would have the rest, uh, check out and check in, uh, your clubs and, or, uh, putter and ball and get to your, uh, other items. She, in, in, and why I received the variance is two reasons, it's legal not conforming, it's a garage, so the conversion of that to a commercial use located within this minimum twenty-foot building setback, uh, was, was necessary. And oops, sorry, and the Board of Adjustment did approve that, as I mentioned, uh, to encroach within that uh, setback. As you can see, this is considerable slope. If you're walking along the side of the highway up here on the sidewalk, you really can't, you have to really look hard down to be able to see any of the structure down here. If you're in a vehicle, you won't see any of this frontage. Um, it's all slope, uh, and heavily vegetated because of the, the amount of drainage, uh, goes through this area as well. Um, so you see the parking area here on the south, uh, for the most part, uh, accessways, and then the configuration of the paths, we have parking calculations. We don't have a miniature golf, so we came up with a parking calculation. We reckon, would say at least one per hole, so if they're packed on a busy holiday weekend or something, um, we know, you know, one per hole should allow for a bit of turnover and, and be ample parking on the property. Knowing also though, that there is direct access to our downtown, uh, down Cottonwood Street, uh, right to the museum. So it's in a prime location for other, uh, on-street parking and, and historic, uh, preservation, uh, historic overlay district. Um, and then you see the pathways that are proposed, there's water features which will get to, existing batting cages are there, uh, will continue to be maintained, proposes to construct a new Ramada for entertainment and party, uh, uh, or, um, that gathering and, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and then those holes kinda snake through, there's a large retention pond here, uh, with fish, as it says, and, uh, kind of that water feature that trickles across the property and circulates to add that cooling element, um, to the plant. I will go ahead and show you the, there's the black and white, you get a better sense of how the holes are laid out and so forth.
Hey Dana, I apologize for interrupting, uh, could you possibly go back one slide? I, um, and I apologize if I'm getting ahead of myself here, but, um, one thing I don't think you touched up on is that there is a, an existing bridge, uh, on this map, it would be towards the right of the screen. Yes, and if that's the bridge I'm thinking, my understanding is that it's currently in a state of disrepair. Is there any sort of plan to address that?
Not at this time. Uh, like I mentioned, we are getting pedestrian crossing, uh, and improvements over on Cottonwood Street. There's substantial improvements that need to occur on the bridge. Um, we recognize if, I think, uh, if that bridge and that, and enough demand occurs with this use or in this area, I could see that becoming a priority possibly, uh, to present to council and see if they wanna fund, um, further improvement of that in the reconstruction, but obviously, we've got a lot of other priorities, uh, right now, so that has not been a, uh, high level conversation only. Uh, and Mr. Barnes, uh, Jerry Barnes is more familiar with it, he is available as well, but there is no intention right now for any improvement to that pedestrian grid.
But that, that bridge, it's, it's secure, there's, no one can get on it or, or, uh, walk across it, it's locked up, correct?
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay, thank you Dana.
So that fence location you see there, we'll have to work with them on how that's going to secure the property. Obviously, you can't go up and over the top or something like that, so that's one little area we'll work through, uh, if, should the commission move this forward, uh, on the building permit side of things and, and have, make sure those, we don't have conflicts like that. And I don't believe there should be any other conflicts, that was a, uh, recent a, uh, inclusion on the plan. Alright, and there you see, uh, again, the re- so there's a water feature here, creating this uh, waterway, if you will, into a retention pond adjacent to the Ramada, uh, right central to the layout. So that's kind of, I think, the central feature and component of that miniature golf course. Uh, and then there's theme elements that, uh, were developed by, I believe, Bruce Binkley, architect. Um, and the concept for Hila County Miniature Golf is themed on landmarks in Hila County. Uh, so you, Hila Monster, obviously, a court, uh, a miniature courthouse, um, uh, Messegawa miniature feature, uh, Hila Observatory feature and those, it, you know, so there's that tie to our region and, and he'll, and, uh, whoa. So with that, staff has listed, uh, just outstanding kinda comments that we still need to address, uh, but none of which I believe are, are, are of issue. We have a good understanding, some were addressed in this design, but we'll go back and, uh, probably have some final minor tweaks, but nothing that would change any substantial use of the property like you just saw. Um, so, staff is recommending, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission motion to approve this major site plan case, SP twenty-two dash oh-one, uh, with the conditions listed in your staff report. And personally, I am comfortable with you just reading it like that and saying, and that would, that, you know, should you wish to make a motion, um, I think that would be ample in a little, having to leave the whole agenda item. But I'd be happy to respond to any questions, and I believe Lois is in the au- audience as well.
She is.
Well, Philly, did we receive any emails or? Okay, well, I'd like to take the opportunity to open this to, uh, the floor for, uh, public hearing. If anyone would like to step up, uh, you may do so now.
Nope.
Well, floor is, uh, silent, um, so I shall now close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed, um. Any discussion amongst the, uh, the commission on this, uh, this, um, subject?
I absolutely stink at mini golf and I cannot wait for this to be here. Yeah, right?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Me too, I can't wait.
I think, um, it's, it's such a joyful thing to see mini golf, so it's, it's even more joyful to see more business, right? More things that are gonna attract people to downtown and generate more revenue for the city so that we can continue to grow, so.
Well, and I, I was actually just talking to friends that own Blue Shop, it's up on Hill, of course, above all this, and they have many grandchildren that are here all the time and they're really excited, thinking all they could do is send them down the hill and tell them to go golf, so. The community's definitely behind it.
Yeah, I remember this, like, a couple of years ago, like, three years ago. I don't know if you remember me, but I came to the batting cages, you showed me this design. I don't know if it's the same one or if it's like revised. Yeah, how long have you been wanting this, the golf course? It's been a long time, hasn't it?
Wow.
Just, so everybody can hear on, online, she's been working on this since nineteen eighty-seven.
So I knew there was, it's been in the works for like a long time, so it would be fun to see this, like, come to for, for extension, for, for, yeah. I think it's an awesome, uh, addition.
Well, Dana, um, yeah, can, can you go back one slide?
There you go.
Um.
No, the motion. But we're gonna have the motion, I think.
My apologies.
There you go.
Well, I, um, I'd, I'd like to actually discuss with you real quick, Dana, uh, the recommended motion, uh, with the following conditions, and it lists the six, um, entries for those conditions, um. Shall, shall I read through them or would you like to present the, uh, conditions?
Uh, Chairman, Commissioners, if you'd like to read through them or discuss them at all, I'd be happy to. Um, but otherwise, as I mentioned, we have a document, the staff report, the staff report is part of the agenda that's memorialized, um, for public record, so I think, um, if, unless you have specific questions on any of those, um, conditions, I would just, um, propose to approve if that's what you wish to do with the staff's listed, uh, conditions of approval.
I have a question though, um, so then this gets approved and do you already have funding for, for it? What did, I don't know, know exactly what, what's the process after that, like, if it gets approved?
From staff standpoint?
I believe this is a private endeavor.
Oh.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not about business, I'm.
But after the meeting, if you wanna talk there about, I, I, you know.
Here, I'd like to see it happen.
No, I'm all in. I motion to approve major site plan case SP dash two-two dash zero-one with the conditions as listed in the staff report.
Second.
Alrighty, uh, motion has been seconded, we shall move on to a vote for, uh, case, uh, um, SP dash two-two dash oh-one with the conditions as listed in the staff report. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion, our vote is unanimous, um, approved. Alright. Congratulations. Alrighty, so moving on, um, uh, item number F, um, discussion and consideration of a recommendation to city council on case number G dash two-two dash zero-two, a request for a two-hundred-and-forty-eight square foot wall sign pursuant to zoning code fourteen dash thirteen dash twenty, located at two-four-four-eight East US Highway sixty, Assessor Parcel Number two, zero, six, zero, four, zero, zero, seven, X.
Excellent. Chairman, thank you again, Commissioners, uh, I guess the cat's now out of the bag, I, I never know when a project goes public or not, so Cow Ranch, obviously, I'm sure you're all aware, and I think, uh, when the man, the council, in recent meeting, um, looking, taking over the, uh, former Safeway, uh, over, uh, in, uh, West Glou. That said, one of those other unique things, similar to what we reviewed, and I may have mentioned this at, uh, your last planning hearing, when you reviewed the monument sign, that was a foot and a half over height, uh, as it was proposed, well, that's a interesting, unique little carve-out in the city's sign code, and this is an inter- this is a very similar carve-out in the sign code, where basically, the ordinance was adopted to say, hey, we have a maximum one-hundred-square-foot wall sign, alright? We don't want anybody else to, uh, you know, people to exceed that or propose, uh, something exceptional, uh, just to let you know, we do have uh, our C-two and C-three Commercial Zoning Districts along the highway corridors, where they're mostly located, we have an exceptional amount of, uh, signage allowed. Um, it's basically two square feet per lineal foot of, of structure. So anyway, and a lot of communities are around one, one-to-one or one-and-a-half to one, uh, but we are very reliant on our highway, it's our economic engine in many ways, and, and, and we're consistent with other communities that have that same scenario. So anyway, there's the unique code. Uh, and at the very end, no attached signs shall exceed one-hundred square feet in area without city council approval. And, uh, you know, I come across this, I've never had anybody request this, but then again, I've never seen a big box in town take up, be redeveloped, and that's when it occurred to me, oh, big boxes, based on their scale and proportions, and typical setback from the roadway for all the abundance of parking they tend to come with, would obviously necessitate that type of, uh, exception. Um, so, and that's exactly what this is being proposed. Uh, here again, here's the site location, uh, on the south side of the sixty, right across the street from the mines. And right, you can't see, I believe this is a, is considerable elevation change to Miami High School uh, behind it, uh, and then the Walmart directly next door, in, you know, the way. Um, so that's the location, uh, they are making a few other, uh, improvements on the property, that's the elevation, uh, proposed, and that's that sign, uh, the the, uh, representative from discount sign is, uh, I believe, online as well, yes, Mr. Jared Marks, if you have any questions for him. Uh, but, uh, he does the Cow Ranch signage, I believe, uh, in the southwest or, or, or Cow Ranch. So the sign dimensions here, but basically, it, it equates to, uh, two-hundred-and-forty-eight square feet. And how the city measures that, and many cities do, is, uh, basically, we say, it's the, and it's defined in our zoning code that uh, a measurement of a wall sign is based on the smallest rectangle that can encompass that sign, that lettering and logo or whatever's involved. So when you look at that, two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and it's hard to put that into perspective, I guess, from a sign scenario, as we don't really think about that uh, often, but, you know, you have a lot of void space in doing so, so that's basically how that would look on that wall. Uh, in addition, there's other signage that has been approved, which are these smaller signs. Uh, those all are well within the, the allowed signage for the property, um, but the scale, the size, uh, exceeding a hundred square feet is why you're reviewing this today, and you're gonna make a recommendation to city council. Uh, not a use permit, anything like this, it's just a discretionary approval, uh, no need for public hearing or comment. Uh, but if somebody's in the audience and has something to say, obviously, you can just allow them the opportunity to speak. Uh, but no need for a public hearing, uh, or anything like that. So, uh, as comparison, I noticed that the Safeway sign silhouette is still visible on Google Earth. So I thought, well, let's just look at the scale of that, and if I took this out and I could turn up the transparency of the Safeway sign, you'd see it, but I drew that yellow box around the Safeway silhouette that you still see on that, on that building wall or saw before it might have been painted. Um, and that's basically, uh, the location that it wa- it wa- it was placed, and it's a very similar scale proportion to the Safeway sign. And then we know the Walmart sign is a much larger building, and that Walmart sign is actually a bit larger than, than this sign. So anyway, as I mentioned, staff, uh, recognize, there's the rest of the signage, uh, they're gonna keep the existing monument sign, just reskin it. It's a legal non-conforming sign and, uh, they're well within the right to do that. Uh, but they're gonna interior light it, which will be a nice change, I believe it might have been ex- uh, illuminated from the exterior, I'm not sure. Um, they have this other Cow Ranch, uh, logo here on the side, where I believe they'll do an outside nursery type of location on the side of the building, uh, for out, or outside sales. Uh, and then, um, and then you see the, the number of different signage, and then I put an X through the Cow Ranch, cause that's not part of the approved site plan as we've approved it up. Now, you're the, or ultimately, city council, what, if they should approve this, that would then become part of the approved site plan. Um, so as I mentioned, for the reasons of the fact that this is a big box, the scale of that building is such that you tend to have signage much larger than a hundred square feet on a big box, and its distance and setback from the roadways because of the expansive parking, uh, I think, uh, from a staff perspective, believe that you could justify uh, the square footage being proposed. Uh, so with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have.
Dana, I do have one question, I, um, I hate to be awkward about this, and I definitely don't wanna make a fool of myself if I'm just dead wrong about it, but, uh, just, um, just for some clarity on jurisdiction lines, um, this area is at least commonly known as, as Claypole and, and, you know, I'm sure everyone's done their homework on this, um, but it, it seems as if the area might technically be outside of, or is that it right there? Okay, so it does swoop in and, and it just barely encompasses it on the edge, okay.
I think that might have been by design.
Okay, okay, certainly, certainly, yeah. No, I understand, considering the, you know, revenue, uh, yeah. Yeah, okay, so that is um that is one thing, I mean, it's it's cutting it close, but it's technically within and again, I apologize for making anything awkward. I just wanted a little bit more clarity as you provided on uh on the um jurisdictional lines for that, so. Well, I suppose historically, people will probably keep referring to it as the Claypool area, but um but okay, just wanted to make sure that um that was all squared away and I, you know, trusted everyone involved was, you know, doing their homework on that for it to get to this point. I just wanted that clarity for myself, so.
And you'll see addresses in Claypool for this property, probably. I don't mailing address. Um it's that's postal is very different. A lot of people mix those up. Well, it's a Miami address, so yeah, well Miami, um a lot of these properties have Miami address.
I actually get my prescriptions at
This is our jurisdiction.
Call out the Claypool Walmart.
Uh I have a question. Are are they gonna paint that building, do you know?
I'm sorry.
Are they gonna repaint that building, do you know, like before they start putting like the signage up?
Yes, they're re-improving the entire site. They're repaving, re-scribing. Um adding some other features, propane sales in the parking lot and a few, and like I said, they're expanding to the side for an outdoor area. I have to review the plans uh again, um but um full improvement. And they have a, I understand they have a high spec uh their opening uh appearance.
Is this like like a Bass Pro Shop type of thing?
It's it's Tractor Supply on steroids.
Okay, cool.
It's got
It does, uh vet care, automotive, you can see it all on the wall, hunting, tools, hardware.
Go to, if you ever go through Sholo, the old Kmart is now a Cal Ranch. It's an, it's an awesome store.
I'm just really glad that they fixed like that hole over there by Taco Bell.
I I think it looks good as well. Is there any further discussion by the commission on this topic? Certainly, so um yes, we'll take the opportunity to open this for public hearing if there's anyone who would like to approach the podium and uh uh give their comment. You may do so now. Okay, the uh floor is uh remaining silent on this um on this subject, so I will go ahead and uh close the public hearing. And I'd just like to double check, shall I have there been any emails or voice messages? Okay, any of that, okay. Alrighty, so shall we approve the motion to?
I make a motion to recommend council approve case G dash two-two dash zero-three as proposed.
I second it.
Motion was seconded. We shall not now move on to a vote. All in favor of the motion to recommend council to approve case number G dash two-three dash oh-two as proposed, uh say aye.
Aye.
Vote was unanimous, uh motion has passed. Alrighty, um I think I think that concludes uh the um cases brought before us tonight. Uh we're now moving on to the future agenda items and scheduling of meetings. Kelly, will you be taking care of that?
Yes, uh Chairman Commissioners, I don't have, I know there's something coming up, but I think you got the rest of the month off um so far, but there is a lot of uh a lot of good activity. Something should be coming away soon again, but um please stay tuned. And we're also hoping, you know, the general plan has to be updated um every uh twenty uh ten years and that is that tenth year uh deadline is gonna be I believe it's in December of twenty twenty-four. So we're in discussions on how we approach bringing that forward and starting just the conversations and discussions on the existing general plan and the accomplishments and and um we'll come up with a schedule for you. And yeah, obviously instrumental in that uh development of the general plan, so that's something to look forward to.
I apologize. Thank you so much for letting me up. Would it be possible for you to send us a summary of what the community commission's role is in? Um the 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 general plan creation or drafting or whatever that looks like, so that's an exciting task question. I just want to understand what our role would be in that.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Chairman, just to and for the members of um committee, the Cal Ranch representative wanted to say thank you and have a good evening. You're appreciative of
Is that, is that Mr. Marks?
I believe so.
Okay, I I actually do, uh Jared Marks, I do see his comment on that one, so uh thank you, Mr. Marks, uh if you're still here. So um I I think that concludes everything that we were going to discuss tonight and all that's left is adjournment. Is there any uh final thoughts before we formally close tonight?
The motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, um motion to adjourn has been seconded. Uh this meeting is now adjourned.